Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for Thursday, March 26. The first item on our agenda is Agenda Item 1A, which is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the Human Relations Advisory Board recommendation and a proposed antidiscrimination ordinance. We welcome Natalie Lewis and Ruth Giesi. Thank you very much, ladies. We look forward to hearing your presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, members of the council. I am Natalie Lewis with the City Manager's Office, and I'm joined here today with Ruth Giesi, who is our Administrator for Neighborhood Outreach and the Diversity Office. Also in the audience today, I just wanted to make sure that we recognize some special guests. We have our Chair Denise Heap from the Human Relations Advisory Board, and she wants to stand and be recognized, and also a board member Cheryl Anderson. And we want to thank them for their efforts. We're here today to present the recommendations of the Human Relations Advisory Board as it relates to the diversity and inclusion in a study that they conducted. As part of their mission, they engaged in a process to really look into how well Mesa is doing in promoting diversity, awareness, and respect. This was probably about a year and a half type of a journey. They started in 2013 and finished up in 2014. And they made sure that it was a very comprehensive process. And there was basically four steps, and it was very data-driven, but it was also very inclusionary. They reviewed all of the demographics of the city of Mesa in a real citywide, comprehensive way. They conducted a statistically valid survey of Mesa residents, asking lots of different questions to find out and get to the bottom line as to how people are really feeling and what they're experiencing. They also, though, convened community dialogues so that they could use that data, but hear firsthand experiences and stories of what our community was experiencing. And they did a very thorough search of existing laws from the federal and state and local laws, and what's happening in and around the country. So basically, these are going to give you the global view of what the findings were, and then Ruth is going to go into a little bit more detail of their recommendations based on these findings. But what they found was that a majority of residents really enjoy living here. We have—Mesa is a nice place to live, and we're really fortunate in that. And a large majority of people feel well-respected and valued here. Residents also enjoy living in a multicultural community. They see that as one of our assets. However, they really do feel that in some respects that the city's commitment needs to—about education and respecting diversity really needs to be more active and more visible. It's not always well-known of the efforts that we're doing and undertaking. And it was apparent in the data and the research that there are some subgroups that don't have legal protections today at the federal and state level that reported higher levels of exclusion and discrimination. And it's important to note that although this was found in Mesa, this is not just a Mesa phenomenon. This is a nationwide trend that's discovered, but that was basically confirmed here in Mesa as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ruth, and she'll go through some of the recommendations based on these more global findings.
Again, good morning. So based on all that work that the board did, they put together their report—they took quite a bit of time to do that—and that report was provided to mayor and council at the end of last year. And they came up with seven main categories of recommendations, and with that, specific tasks to identify in order to reach the goals of those recommendations. So the first was to expand communication to population subgroups with the highest percentages of limited English proficiency, to make the city's commitment to welcoming and serving its diverse populations more transparent, to engage and learn more about the needs of those population subgroups most alienated from the community based on our findings in the report, specifically our Hispanic community, our residents with disabilities, and our lesbian, gay, transgender, and bisexual community. To create ways to bring the community together to learn more and to celebrate Mesa's diversity, to create legal protection from discrimination for those subgroups not protected in federal or state law, to educate the public about the cultural diversity within Mesa, to break down our barriers and misunderstandings between population subgroups that can lead to discrimination, and to expand the city's visible recognition of veterans. To highlight some of the ways that the city is aligned with these recommendations, the One Mesa Community Pledge was introduced by the mayor this year in January, and it's a way for businesses and individuals alike to demonstrate that Mesa is a welcoming and respectful place to live. And that One Mesa pledge—you can go online, submit your name or your business's name, and be part of that effort. Our Title VI Implementation Plan—we citywide are realigning to meet our new standards—the cities—are federal standards and guidelines identified by the government most recently, and so we are looking citywide to make sure that we're following Title VI guidelines. Our Hometown Heroes Campaign—it began in April 2014, when then-Mayor Finter designated Councilmember Kavanaugh at the time to head a city working group to implement the program. The first recognition of hometown heroes occurred at the Celebration of Freedom in July of 2014. And then we also started a banner campaign to allow those to honor their family or other residents in Mesa who are either serving today or are veterans who have served in the U.S. Armed Forces. The Latino Strategic Diversity Strategic Plan, Councilmember Luna is currently working to review Mesa's efforts towards inclusivity and communication with our Latino population, who are 27% of our population here in Mesa. And that's just looking at better communication and to develop a new model for outreach to our diverse populations.
So within those seven broad categories and those examples that Ruth just went through, there are 25 different things in there that we're continuing to work on. So there are lots of things that we're continuing to develop. We've made some headway in them. We've responded in some way or action. But there were at least three where there was a compelling reason to just bring them forward and say, "These are things that need future or are open for future consideration by the council or the community and city management." So the first one is related to purchasing a Braille embosser. We know that the closest equipment for this to help with people who have limited or no eyesight is in Central Phoenix. And we even have someone who's blind on our Human Relations Advisory Board. And so this was identified as a need in Mesa and is something that probably could be researched, whether it's an embosser or some other kind of technology, to look into what we should be doing here in Mesa. The second item is related to a management policy, and basically taking a more specific look at employees who are undergoing gender transitions, because that is such a unique situation, that there may need to be some policies and procedures for someone who's undergoing that, both for the respect of the individual, but also for the work unit. And then the third thing is enacting an antidiscrimination ordinance, and in particular, with focus to provide those legal protections for all of the subgroups that may not be represented in federal and state laws today. And so with that, we open up the comments to the City Council on your questions on the recommendations and anything else moving forward.
Thank you very much. I think that's the first thing I want to make sure that I say. We have several people in the room here that are part of the Human Relations Advisory Board, and Natalie and Ruth. I first want to express my thanks to everyone who's been involved in this process. I know this is the culmination of about a year's worth of work, and a lot of very thoughtful, very deliberate attention being paid to this issue, and it's been handled very well and very professionally, and I really appreciate the good work that's been put into this. And having said that, we do have a few people that want to speak on this topic. What I think I might do is invite them to come forward, and we'll hear from them. And then after that, we'll open it up for council discussions, just so we have the benefit of having heard what everyone has to say. I have two cards. First is from Denise Heap. Denise is also, coincidentally, the chairman of our Human Relations Advisory Board. So Denise, I'd invite you to come forward. We'll be happy to hear from you for three minutes, and then we'll proceed from that point.
Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, and people in the audience, I never thought I would be here today. Thank you. It hasn't taken one year. It's taken more than two years to get here, and a lot of work by everybody. Excuse me. I normally don't get emotional. Blame it on my steroids. We were created in 2000 to build bridges among the communities in Mesa. And our board has developed over the years to the point where I think we're beginning to be successful. We are doing things that do outreach to every community in Mesa—to the disabled, to the mentally disabled, the Hispanic community, African-American, Asian. We work with students. We work with the schools. We work with the LGBT community, and we're open to anyone who has a problem in the city, and we will try to resolve it. I'm here today to speak in support of our report. We had 22 recommendations, and I believe they are all important. And as Natalie and Ruth have identified, the three that they're bringing forward are perhaps the ones that we need most at this time, because we can work on getting a Disabilities Board. We can work on Title VI. It's an ongoing process. But there is a definite need for a Braille printer, not just for the member of our board, but for everyone else in the city. We need it located at one of the libraries so it can be utilized by everyone with an impairment, so they don't have to—or the city doesn't have—to drive to Phoenix to procure those kinds of documents. We need a policy on gender identity. We had a woman working in the police department who approached the former—who approached the police chief and asked for a policy, and he was in support, and he was told he couldn't do it. That policy made her life incredibly difficult as she underwent transition. She is not the only employee of the city who will be going through a transition. I can't speak to any names, but statistically, we know there will be more. And then the nondiscrimination ordinance. It's not just for the LGBT population. It includes veterans. It includes the disabled. It includes—at least, our recommendation includes marital and family status, age, gender, gender identity. We need this. We need it not just in hiring and employment and housing, but also a totally inclusive policy in public accommodations, because we need to assure that every one of our residents and every one of the visitors—because, let's be honest, Mesa relies on tourism—is treated well when they visit the city. I know people have their belief systems. We live in a secular and a pluralistic society, and the underlying principle of all of us getting along is toleration and acceptance. There are people that I don't like. I try to treat them with dignity and respect, and they're laughing because they know I've got a really bad temper. Anyway, that's all I needed to say today, and thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ruth, and please express our appreciation to your board for the work that they've done in bringing this to this point.
Thank you.
Well, counsel, I think specifically there's three suggestions that—
You have other speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. There was a card from another speaker, and I apologize. Upon closer review of the card, it says that Cheryl Anderson says that she's in favor of this agenda item, but she checked the box saying, "I do not wish to speak." So Cheryl, I assume that's still the case. Okay, thank you very much. So those are the only cards I have. Thank you very much. So I think the specific recommendations that are before us—and Natalie and Ruth, correct me if I'm wrong—is a Braille embosser, updating the employment policy of the city to specifically deal with transgender situation, and then whether or not we want to explore an antidiscrimination ordinance. So just to kind of focus, I think those are the issues that we're specifically asked for some feedback on. I'm happy to—as long as I'm talking—I'll go ahead and express my opinion on those. The Braille embosser, to me, is kind of a no-brainer. I think absolutely we need to do that. The only question I have is I'm not sure, being not blind and not in tune with the blind community. I know there's been strides in technology, and that now it's very common to have scanners so that written material gets scanned in, and then there's a computer program that reads it. So I don't know if maybe that's the latest version of how we assist the blind community or not, and if we get a Braille embosser, we're actually, you know, still kind of a 20th-century solution to a modern-day problem. So I fully support getting a Braille embosser, but I think it's worth asking the question, is that really, going forward, the best way to serve that community or not? So I don't know the answer to that question.
And Mayor, we'll do some research that. I think it's the purpose is what we're trying to resolve, right? Whatever the technology that best serves that need, we'll certainly look into it. And I think with the direction of council, we'll look at acquiring something like that so that it'll be here conveniently located in Mesa.
Okay. The employment policy update, I think that also is a no-brainer, but I see that as something that is in the purview of city management rather than the City Council. I think that's—we rely on our city manager and his great human relations—yeah, human relations staff—to keep—make sure we have an updated policy manual that deals with all of these issues, which I agree, this is not a hypothetical. We have and will continue to have employees that that policy would have a direct impact on, so I encourage city management to update that. And then with regard to an ordinance, I do favor exploring what an ordinance would look like. I think until we have some language, there's really not a lot of detail to discuss, but I would be in favor of asking our city attorney, Ms. Spinner, to provide us with draft language. I think my understanding of these ordinances is that housing and employment are typically topics of those ordinances, and those address kind of basic human needs and rights—to have a roof over your head and earn a living. And then we need to explore what else we might want to include in that type of an ordinance. It could address hospitality. It could address restaurants. It could address small business. I'm interested in hearing from the community what level of support there is for those including those topics. And then my understanding of these ordinances recently is that it's also a good opportunity for us to reaffirm the importance of religious freedom. I think in other states and communities that are dealing with this issue right now, that is part of the discussion, and I think it ought to be in Mesa, Arizona, as well. So those are my thoughts. Again, and the main thing I want to express today is my gratitude for the very professional way this has been handled. As you know, what—the first thing the Human Relations Advisory Board did was commission a study by the Morrison Institute, and that was done in a very scientific way, with a large sample as part of that opinion survey. So I think we're doing this in the context of having good information and a lot of good advice, and I look forward to really addressing this in a very positive way and accomplishing the tasks, which is, as I understand them, to expand communication, to increase the transparency that the city government functions with, and to discourage discrimination and to help groups like veterans. I was proud yesterday that we took the veterans issue to another level in accepting the challenge to end veterans homelessness in Mesa. So I think we'll continue to find new and better ways to serve some of these communities. But I'm sorry, I didn't mean to drag on that long. Those are my thoughts. I look forward to hearing the rest of the council. Mr. Cavanaugh.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the recommendations of the committee. I've had a close working relationship with this committee since it was first adopted, actually, in 2000, and have worked with the committee on a variety of issues over the course of time. And about four or five years ago, I think Ruth invited me to give a welcome to the Human Relations Advisory Boards from around Maricopa County and around the state that Mesa was hosting for, I think, a statewide conference here. And that was the—my first opportunity to hear what the issue of the discrimination ordinance is. Many of the advisory boards from around Arizona were discussing the issues at that time. And so it really even—it goes beyond two years. I know that our board members back at that time were listening to the discussions occurring in Phoenix, the discussions in Tempe, what had happened in Tucson previously. And I know that they—it was an issue that has been kind of on the burner for a while, and I think our board took a very solid approach in monitoring what those other communities did, the issues that arose in those other communities, either the drafting problems that arose or the unanticipated problems. And I think it was a good approach to take. And when Phoenix first launched its proposal, there was a lot of discussion, a lot of positive discussion, and there were changes and amendments made to the ordinance to accommodate the religious freedom issues. And fortunately, at least since that time, it seems to have worked well with few, if any, challenges. I think Tempe was the next in line, and through their council process, again, it was a very smooth process, again, because many of the other issues had already been debated and disposed of, and controversial issues dealt with. And it was also a pleasure to see their population, Tempe's voters, enshrine their ordinance in their charter. I think it's an indication of how far that we've come. But I think, again, our board has taken the opportunity to study the results, the activities in those communities, for all the areas that they were looking at. I particularly, again, liked the focus on veterans and people with disabilities, in addition to the LGBT community. Then-Mayor Finter and I had the opportunity to attend the forums, and those were eye-openers for me on a variety of topics. I honestly didn't have a clue that of some of the challenges, for example, that veterans in our community were facing. I just simply didn't believe that existed. And so I think the recommendations that the committee has provided to us, they are data-driven. I think they're reality-driven. I think they're compassionately-driven, and so I look forward to the discussion on an ordinance for us. I think Ms. Spinner will probably present us several different variations of issues, on issues that communities have looked at in terms of employment and housing and accommodation or hospitality, whatever that is. I also do appreciate the tremendous support that we received over the past several months from a number of association industries and groups that have encouraged us to move on with the task, and so I appreciate getting to this point.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Mr. Thompson.
I'd first like to thank the Human Relations Board for bringing these recommendations forward, putting all the time and effort that you've put into the study. I like two of your three recommendations, absolutely. The one recommendation that I'm not in favor of, however, is the ordinance. I've never felt that government is the solution when it comes to business. We're typically the problem. We're usually the ones that are getting in the way, and for that reason, I would not support an ordinance unless—the caveat would be that there would be religious freedoms protected, and that it would only apply to businesses that are over—that have 100 employees or more. So it would be the larger businesses like the Boeings, the Apples, and so forth. So that would be my recommendation going forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richens.
I just have a couple of questions, actually. In the staff report, in Attachment B, on page 11, it lists all of the potential protected classes, and I've tried to figure out, but can't—what is genetic information? What does that mean in this regard?
Genetic information is basically that if you get studies related to your genetics or you have a marker, for example, for cancer, that it cannot be—that information cannot be used against you in employment. And it is already a protected right under federal laws. It's called the—
Does the HIPAA law cover that already?
Yeah, it's Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act. And it's after—it's from Title II of the—
And medical information is protected under HIPAA.
And it is.
What is it outside of HIPAA that we're trying to protect here? If federal law already covers it, why are we—
Well, and here's—and if council decides that you want to take that out of the protected classes, that's your decision and your choice. What we did as a staff is we just looked at what other cities were doing and just basically copied and pasted for the protected classes, plus looked at what the recommendations were for the Human Relations Advisory Board. But clearly, you know, that particular effort does have some legal protections in place today, and, again, it would be a policy decision and choice of the council.
I'm not opposed to it. I just want to understand what we're trying to accomplish with it, is all. If we're going to include stuff, I just want to be clear of that.
Yeah, and this would just be an all-inclusionary type of an effort if you included all of these different areas.
The other question I had was related to fair housing, and we have pretty robust fair housing laws on the federal level. And I'm ignorant to whether or not LGBT communities are included in the fair housing law. Is that included under federal law or not? I've asked a few folks, and I've gotten conflicting answers, and I was wondering if somebody could refer to a specific statute to where that—
Do you want me to start, Debbie, or you want to go? Okay. So we've researched it very carefully, and I've tried to get as much information as I can from our legal department on this.
Thanks.
As it relates to the LGBT area, there are a couple of things out there that might kind of cause you to wonder what's going on. But one of them is that there's been some recent EEOC case law related to the word sex and how that applies to the LGBT community. But given that it's case law—
Wait, can you back up? You used an acronym that will find you a quarter for.
Yeah. Why don't I let you go, Debbie?
What was that acronym?
Councilmember Richens, with regard to housing, this issue does not apply. Housing—and actually, employment also, there's no express federal or state law protections for sexual orientation or gender identity and expression. Now, Natalie was going to some case law interpretation by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, and those are employment cases that are filed, and they have broadened their interpretation of sex discrimination to include some gender identity issues. But if you're talking express legal protections, there are no federal or state legal protections for sexual orientation or gender identity and expression.
In fair housing?
Correct. Either fair housing or employment. They are not considered protected classes under federal or state law.
Okay. All right. Thank you. The other kind of, I guess, comment I had is—I've been following closely cases nationally. There's one in Oregon and one in Ohio about small businesses who were asked to perform a service of some kind— a service of some kind, particularly related to the wedding industry. And the, Oregon had an ordinance, Ohio did not, and there were lawsuits filed against small businesses because they didn't want to serve a particular wedding. And I have a concern that we're going to create a legal mechanism in the law that's going to create more tension in our community than, than help break down barriers to diversity. And I'd hate to create a law that somebody could use to then turn around and sue somebody just because they didn't want to make a wedding cake. You know, and, and, you know, I know that's a sensitive issue. I mean, there is a time in our country when people looked at interracial marriage in, in a very negative way, and, you know, over time, we've been able to break that down, and, and that's good for our country. And so, and I'm not expressly opposed to gay marriage. I, I've never had a problem with that. But I, I think government needs to wield this power very carefully, that if we create laws that apply to small businesses, that, you know, they're probably foolish for turning away business in, in any economy, but I'd hate to create a, a mechanism within the law that would allow someone to punish a small business for not wanting to, to provide that service. And so I think we want to thread that needle, needle really carefully as we look at this kind of thing.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Richens, that will depend on what the council is interested in pursuing. Most of the ordinances across the country, they either include public accommodation, which includes all businesses, and includes the protected classes for sexual orientation and gender identity and expression, or they don't include any public accommodation. There are different states that handle this issue differently. Could there be a middle ground? Possibly. Mesa could look at narrowing public accommodation to more public hospitality, which could be, again, defined however council wants to define it, but it could be hotels and restaurants. It could exclude catering, which may, may address the, the concern in, in those cases. I'm familiar with the Oregon case. I'm not sure I'm familiar with the Ohio. I need to know the facts. But, you know, if council tells me what you're interested in, we will try to address those concerns and, and make sure the ordinance is tightly drawn so that it, it allows for both...
Yeah, I mean, you see, you see businesses that have signs that say, "We, we reserve the right to refuse service to anyone." I would presume that if an ordinance like this was in place in our city, you couldn't have a sign like that on your door.
Well, you know, those signs...
You can't have a sign like that on your door right now.
I mean, you see it. You, you see it still, but I, I wouldn't, I would presume that doesn't really get enforced, yeah.
Not based on the protected class. You know, you cannot, under federal law, if, or state law, if you are a member of a protected class, be denied service because you are a member of that protected class. You can be denied service for any other reason. For example, you don't have shoes on. You always see the "No shirt, no shoes, no, no service" signs. So even if you're a member of a protected class, if you come in without shoes on into a restaurant, they are allowed to ask you to leave or put shoes on. But you cannot be denied service because you are a member of a protected class.
So, let me ask that question in reverse. If you're not protected, can you be denied service?
Yes.
So if, if, if I walk in as a Joe Blow white guy to a restaurant, and they say, "We don't serve your type here," that's okay?
No.
Because white guys... I just want to ask that in reverse.
Then it's because you're, because of your race, or because of your sex. So, you know, but you're correct. The, arguably, the white male under 40 with no disabilities and not veteran status, they have less legal protections than some of the expressly identified protected class members. And I don't want to say less, because it's a challenge, Councilmember Richens, but arguably...
I'm just still reeling in my flat feeling that I, you included me in an under-40 group, right?
I know you're not.
Thank you, Debbie.
So what I would need is, is hearing from all of you what you want included in, in the ordinance, and if you have specific concerns such as religious protections, a number of the ordinances across the country do include religious protections, especially religious organizations. They are typically exempted from this ordinance. They're still obviously subject to federal and state law, but they are exempted from most of these ordinances across the country.
Okay. And I mean, just for the record, I'm not, I'm not opposed to an ordinance and, and exploring, doing an ordinance in Mesa, one that works for, for Mesa and our community. But if we're going to protect people, let's protect, let's protect them, you know, and, you know, I've always struggled with specific carve-outs for, for specific groups, and, you know, we, we need to create a community. Living in Northwest Mesa, District One, I mean, we're a very diverse district. All income ranges, all races, many different religions, and it's fun. It's, it's a great place to live. And, and, I mean, I can go up and down my street and name, you know, LGBT, and, and Hispanic, and Mormon, and Catholic, and, and we get along for block watch parties, and it's great fun. We have old people and young people, and it's not an issue. But, you know, that's just, that's the culture that I find in my district. And, you know, as we explore this, though, I want to be really careful that we don't create a law that can be used to, to really publicly shame someone if, if they don't want to just make a wedding cake. And, and I see that happening around the country, you know. It's maybe, maybe, maybe you need to move on if somebody doesn't want to do that for you. You know, there's lots of people that make great wedding cakes, you know. So I think that's, would be my, my big concern, is to make sure that we don't use the power of government to pit two people against each other in our courts and create more of a firestorm than what we're trying to solve. We're trying to get people to be inclusive and tolerant with one another, and to me, a law that goes down that road creates more division and more intolerance, and it creates a lot of hard feelings. So let's just be really careful when it comes to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Glover.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank our Human Relations Advisory Board for, and the city staff, for the very thorough work and methodical way that you went about doing this. You took your time and your effort into doing, and put a lot of thought into including all members and segments of our society in this study, and I fully support all of the recommendations of the board. You can't create a stronger unified community and have progress without people firmly believing that the actions that we cha, that we choose and take as a council and the policies we ultimately implement will make life better for them. I firmly believe that there has to be inclusion, genuine inclusion for all social and economic levels in our society as well, for the residents who live here and for tourists who visit here as well. I appreciate the comments, and I do appreciate the insight that my colleagues have offered today. And I do believe that there's room for compromise. Like the mayor said, this is the beginning of a dialogue, that we can direct the city attorney to frame this ordinance to fit Mesa, and that we can work together as a council to come up with something that can be accepted by everybody involved. And so thank you for the hard work that you guys have done.
Thank you very much. Mr. Luna.
First of all, Ruth, I, I remember when I was chair of the Human Relations Board, and people couldn't get into this building, and so we wrote the, the city council and said, "What about accommodating the disabled?" I couldn't believe that we didn't have access. So a braille is a no-brainer. In fact, 60 Minutes just had a show of a young kid using Legos to make a device that would help the blind actually read. So I know there's new technology out there. If a 13-year-old kid can make something, I know there's something out there that we can certainly do. In terms of the creating a gender identity, certainly I support that effort. I think it's a great idea, and I'm totally in support of an ordinance. We need to make sure that everyone in our community feels like they're part of our city, and so I appreciate that you're doing this. And thank you for the Latino Strategy Plan. I'm very eager to work with you on that, and I will continue to, to support your efforts as we move forward in the community, as a community. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So I, Ms. Fintner, I hear a consensus asking for a draft ordinance, so we'll work the... Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Kavanaugh?
I just thought of something. And my colleagues, could we include vertically challenged people as one of the protect categories? Because, you know, Mr. Luna, see eye to eye on that.
I second the motion.
Well, we can debate the merits of that. But I, I think what the discussion points out is that we're interested in, in making a Mesa-specific ordinance, and that we do want to see some options, and that as a council, we'll weigh in and we'll... I, I think the state-of-the-art on these ordinances has progressed over, the community started adopting them a few years ago, and, and some of the potential pitfalls have been identified, and so I think we have the benefit of a lot of other communities' experiences on this. And so I look forward to drafting an ordinance that's specific to Mesa, that has community support, and that will be an asset. So, thank you, and I prefer, we appreciate you taking on the challenge and giving us some language that we can then work with. Any other comments, council? Thank you very much. We appreciate the great work that our staff has done, specifically Natalie and Ruth. We appreciate you. And thanks again to the members of the Human Relations Advisory Board that are here with us today. The next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation discuss and provide directly direction on the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System and the potential impact on the general government budget.
Good morning, Mayor, members of council. My name is Michael Kennington. I'm the Chief Financial Officer. To my far right is Candace Canistrara, our Director of the Office of Management and Budget. And to my, next to me is Ryan Wimmer, the Deputy Director of the Office of Management and Budget. Today, we'd like to have the discussion with the council as the options, the annual contribution options to the Public Safety Pension Retirement System. And without further ado, I'll allow Ryan to kick us off.
Good morning. We'd like to start providing, with providing a little background on the Arizona Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. The city of Mesa provides sworn police and fire personnel with a retirement plan benefit through PSPRS. Mesa has two distinct PSPRS plans, a plan for fire and a, and a plan, a plan for police. The investment and administration of Mesa's plans are managed centrally by a state PSPRS agency. And each year, PSPRS commissions an actuarial study for each of the plans to determine the contribution rates that are needed in the following year to adequately fund the plans. The required contribution, contribution amounts are the estimated cost of participating in the plans in the upcoming year, plus a portion of any unfunded liability from prior years. So if you look at this next slide, there's some information we'll talk about. Over the last fiscal, the last fiscal year, the unfunded liability of the Mesa plans has increased substantially. So during fiscal year 1314, which, which finished on June 30th of 2014, the funded status of, of Mesa's plans declined significantly. So if you see the, here listed are, are the fire plan and the police plan, and as of June 30th, 2013, the, the fire plan was about 62% funded, the police plan was about 58% funded. And if you see as of June 30th, 2014, which is the end of the fiscal year that was just completed, the plans declined about 56% and 52%. And you also see, next to those numbers, the unfunded liability increasing substantially from $310 million to $406 million. Now, PSPRS requires by policy that all unfunded liabilities are paid off by the, by the year fiscal, by the fiscal year 2037, '38. So because, some of the reasons why that increase, that major increase occurred, recently, the Arizona Supreme Court ruled that certain aspects of pension reform that were adopted by the state in 2011 were unconstitutional. That had a major impact on the, on the funded status of the plans. There was also a continued recognition of the investment losses during the most recent recession in 2008 and 2009. Those losses and gains are always smoothed over a period of seven years in order to mitigate the impact of any, any swings in the market. And also, the third reason is that previously, the actuarial assumptions had not accounted for payments of cost-of-living adjustments or permanent benefit increases, or what they're called in the plans. So the current funding plans, actuarial studies now account for an assumption of, of a payout of a cost-of-living adjustment. And those cost-of-living adjustments have happened over the last 29 years, every year, so it makes sense to have them included. The required contribution amount, amounts that the city's going to need to pay, in order to fund the unfunded liability, the FY 1516, which is the fiscal year coming up, the required contribution for active employees increased substantially. PSPRS, realizing that the increases are, are significant, provided an option where employers could phase in the increase over thr, over a three-year period. They recommended paying the full payment, but they allowed for an option of, of a three-year phase-in. The phase-in would result in lower contributions in the first two years, but then it would require additional contributions in the future years to make up the difference. So we looked, we looked at three options for the contributions. The first option you see here is what we're calling Option 1, and that's the full payment. This is the normal contribution that would normally be required by PSPRS. It's, it's an $8.7 million cost increase over the current year, fiscal year 1415's budget. You can see there in the plans, in the current year, 1415, the rates we're paying are 33% about for both of the plans. That means the city contributes 33% of an employee's salary to, to PSPRS. For instance, if an employee made $100, the city pays $33 to PSPRS. That's the current year. Next year, the rates under this full payment option will increase to 41%, 42% for fire and police, respectively. So the overall impact there is around $8.7 million. If we look at a couple other options, we looked at a couple other options. Option 2, we're calling a partial phase-in of the, of the contribution increase at a $5 million increase cost over the current year's budget. And if you look at, there you have the rates in 1516 at about $37, $38 million, with a total contribution of $37 million, which is an increase of about $5 million from last year, or from this year. But that comes at a cost, because we're not contributing, we, we wouldn't be contributing the full $8.7 million increase. The additional cost over the next 22 years, which, over which it's required to pay the, pay off the full unfunded liability, is $7.6 million. There's a, there's a schedule at the end of this presentation, if you're wanting to see that calculation, it shows each year and the different, the difference in cost. Option 3, we're calling the entire phase-in. This is, this is the minimum amount that PSPRS told us that we absolutely had to contribute as a phase-in amount. There, you can see the rates only increased to about 34%, 35%, and the total cost is only about 2.2 million more than the current fiscal year. But the cost of this entire phase-in is significant. It would be an additional $13 million cost increase over the next 22 years to make up the difference, because we're contributing less than the full amount, the full required amount this year. So to summarize, we have several options for the 1516 contribution. The increase under Option 1 would be $8.7 million. The, under Option 2 would be about $5 million, and Option 3 would be about $2.2 million. But with Options 2 and 3, there's a, an additional cost of delaying these contributions. Option 2 is about 7.6, and Option 3 is about 13 million.
Obviously, of, of those three options, they do have an impact on the budget and the, on doing for the proposed 1516 budget. If we look at the full payment option, the $8.7 million, as we discussed, if we look at the $5.7 million, which is the impact to the police department, and $3 million for the fire and medical department, you can see it's about 3.4% to 3.8% of their adopted budget for 1415, to put that in perspective of the, the dollar amount, that that would be impacted. If we look at a partial phase-in, which is the $5 million, that's kind of the partial not going to the full, or to the, to the minimum amount, the impact to the police department would be $3.3 million, which is about 2% of their current budget, and the fire and medical would be $1.7 million, which is about 2.1%. So that drops that down a little bit from that 3.4% to about 2% of their budget. This is the, the partial phase-in, is the staff recommendation going into 1516, because what this would allow us to do is, we would allow us to be able to cover these additional costs through vacant positions. No filled positions would be affected. It would be less impact to the services we're currently providing than to do the full $8.7 million for the first one. It also allows us additional time to look at, again, this is a phase-in. That means by year three, we're still up at that $8.7 million cost factor. But allowing to do a partial phase-in allows a little bit more time to consider and review how we're going to cover those costs in 1617 and beyond.
And can I jump in real quick, Mayor and council? One of the things, too, is while they give us these options to pay, and we're actually going with a, a mod... they give us these options to pay, and we're actually going with a modified version, we can also, and that's based on an existing schedule. So we take this $5 million contribution, and we create a 22-year schedule. We can choose, and one of the things we've talked about, and Mike Kennington put the schedule together, we can also accelerate future payments also. And the point is, this almost like kind of paying down your mortgage early. We would expect that even if we choose the $5 million modified option, and that 7.6, we'll we'll actually, it'll be less than that. Because we would expect that as we have in the future years, we would be able to contribute more to the the schedule. And this, obviously, this earlier on in the timeframe that we do that, the better off to drive that cost down. We would expect that, you know, hoping sales tax does well, we can do that. Now, what you see, some cities are able to pay that upfront. You'll notice those cities are the ones that have the highest amount of construction sales tax going on. If we had a significant amount of kind of that one-time sales tax coming to the city, which I expect in the next couple of years with some significant construction projects and development, that we could take those dollars, one-time dollars, and at any time over the next 22 years, obviously, again, better in the earlier years, we can drive down that 7.6. Even though we're, say, we're paying five, the next year, we could pay a little bit more. We can pay a little bit more the next year. So if we were to go with Option Two, one, it helps us out tremendously in this year's operating budget. The concern we had was we didn't want, we were trying to find a way not to impact public safety services to the best way possible and really just take some vacancy savings that are being realized over the next year. Otherwise, you know, whether it's in public safety, it would have significant impact on services or, or any other operation in the general fund, it would have a significant impact. So, but yeah, at the same time, we didn't think it was prudent to take the minimum payment. We just felt like that was a, we could, we could, we needed to bite the bullet a little bit and pay some more. So that's, that's what's before you. And I think we want to kind of also kind of cover with you kind of where all these budget pressures are and what we're trying to do. Because remember, it's not just the pension new costs that's come to us, but it's also our revenues that haven't anticipated. It's a compounding effect that's really hurting us right now. So.
Thank you. I know where there's a lot of counsel interested in talking about this, Mr. Richens, and then Mr. Finner.
A couple of questions. How often do they run new actuaries that recalculates additional principal every year? So what's the risk down the road if we, if we quote-unquote finance a portion of this over 22 years, that additional principal is going to get added in subsequent years, you know? So, so if this year, the number is 8.7, and they rerun the actuals, next year, we're fine, maybe two or three years around, they're fine. And then year five, they say, oh, you know, we're short again, you know, we'll have to add some.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Richens, the greatest threat we have in front of us is, remember, the reason we're having to make this payment is because the law that was, the reforms that were passed in 2011 were overturned. And as a fact, then we're having to kind of play makeup to that provision. There's also another case that's still sitting out there now that's getting ready to go through the court system. They could have an equal impact to all agencies that are in PSPRS. So what's scary is that this is maybe the first wave, and there could be another impact to the PSPRS system also. I think that's our greatest concern is, I think the actuaries have been pretty consistent. I think the fact that they included this cost of living adjustment for retirees in the calculation, one demonstrates the impact of that benefit in the overall system, but it also has given us a truer picture of what the actuarial status of the fund looks like.
I also understand that there's some efforts to craft legislation to make some permanent fixes to this situation as well.
Yeah, there's, there's proposals out there. Even Mr. Jeffries has an idea. And frankly, if we could just take his idea and just go get it done, it would, I agree, he, his idea would have a material impact on savings for the fund. But because pensions are now protected by the Constitution, the road to get there is more difficult. We also know that the league, the, I want to say the Texas National League, but I'm the wrong state. The Arizona League is also looking at this, and they are going to be making recommendations to the executive board, executive board in May, I think that's correct. So, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces because there's also the thought about, an idea of, I, I think we also have to look at this, too, is that the benefits now for those who are in the system, you kind of have to say, you know, they've been in the system for a while, do you continue those benefits? But real, another question comes up, what about the employees that are not, you know, the employees you're going to hire two or three years from now? You know, do you, can you change the the system and and have a different tier then? So all those discussions are still out there on the table to be discussed.
Mr. Finner?
A few of my questions were answered with that. I appreciate mentioning. You know, we, in the city, we hold pretty large reserve funds for different enterprises, different things, and we experience in reinvestment or whatever, different interest rates. Without getting too far in the weeds, have you examined, you know, the interest rate that we're charged over this 22 years versus some of these holding funds and and interest rates that we experience? Is there any advantage to paying it upfront? And then I have a follow-up question.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Finner. So the pension, the PSPRS board, they invest, their discount rate is at 7.85. And so that's, their average has been about 7.5 actually over the last 25 years. And so they are, they're able to invest in international equity, other more, I guess, a little more risky investments than than we do here at the city of Mesa. They also incur losses that are a lot higher. So, you know, some people have said, maybe we put money in sooner, our annual contribution in sooner, and that's fine. We may be able to earn a higher interest rate. Because really, a pension, you want to just match your assets to your, your present value of your unfunded, your liabilities, your actuarial liabilities. And that's where you get your unfunded liability. So you always want your assets to grow through investment returns or through contributions. And so you could get a higher return through, through giving the money to PSPRS to invest, but you also can incur losses, which will drop your assets even further down. So you could you could take on a little bit more risk by giving them money upfront.
Right. Because we're, we're very careful about the risk we experience when we reinvest some of these holding funds or these reserve accounts. And
That's right.
An example of some of those interest rates, what, they're pretty small.
Yeah, for our portfolio here at the city, where I think our current year old is 57 basis points or 0.57% because we're in treasuries and agencies.
Right.
You know, like I said, they're able to invest in a little bit more risky assets.
Right. So, you know, the question, and I'm no high-finance guy, but I know that you all have been looking at it. Do we incur or experience that 7.5% interest rate? Or do we stay safe? So I guess it's the risk, you're saying, hey, the potential risk maybe is we're too risk averse to.
We could definitely bring up, do an analysis and bring it to council to get your thoughts and your, your opinion, your direction on that. So like I said, one of the options is currently, we pay the contribution in the payroll over throughout the year. One of the recommendations by the task force that the, that Chris has mentioned was pay, making that entire annual contribution. So there's 41 million at the beginning of the year, the year, and letting them invest it. So that is an option that.
So then we would experience, or at least get the credit for.
Right. Right. You're saying right. So you have the funds would go into their funds sooner, then you get the benefit of their accrued interest benefiting as opposed to us paying it out over time. So in a year's time, it's the question of how much interest you get the benefit of by putting it into the pension system day one at seven.
7.5.
7.5% versus us paying it over time. Now, we also have to look at our own working capital needs through the city. So it's kind of this balancing act. Obviously, if we have the opportunity, and that's what I'm suggesting, too, if we pay the the 5 million, which is really a modified version, we don't know of any other cities, most other cities are either looking at paying it all upfront or paying the minimum. We're saying, you know, we really are really trying to structure this based on our operating needs today and trying to minimize the impact to current operations, specifically in public safety. So we really scaled this to say, okay, if we had to pay, what could we pay and still have a minimal impact on operations this coming budget year? And that's where we got to the 5 million. Because that difference between the 8.7 and the 5 was just enough that we felt like if we could get that 3.7, that would help us in this next year. But we also want to put a lot of pressure on ourselves over the next couple of years. Because really, in the next three years, if we can pay a little bit more than even what they've scaled, scheduled us to do, then that'll draw that number down that over time, that'll actually cost the city. So that's, that's our philosophy as we look at it right now.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just, one quick follow-up then. So prudence would suggest that's a great way to go. And I appreciate Councilmember Richens mentioning possible reforms. Everybody's looking at that. I don't know how, and this is a little bit of a soapbox, how cities don't help to support the idea of doing reforms, even with all the politics and everything at the state level. Because this is, it seems like the glide path that we're on is not in a good direction with this. And we all pay the price. And I do have to, for full disclosure, I was concerned about being a part of this discussion because I do receive as a retiree in the fire system benefits. And so I talked with the city attorney. They tell me I don't have a conflict of interest because this is talking about future employees, not the past ones. But I would think it, it would really be important for us to, at our lobbying levels and others, to support major reforms in the system. Because obviously, we can see that it's having a direct impact on public safety for today. So, but assuming that, just a quick, so wouldn't prudence suggest that we do minimally or your 5 million with the hopes and the understanding that there's probably going to be reform in the system at some point down the road, which might have an adjustment on the future impacts? Or does that actuary ever, actuarial ever change if they do the reforms?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. At some point, that would, yeah.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Finner, you're absolutely right. The actuary, they do their study every year. There's many variables that go into there. And so reform would definitely help that liability come down. So we, our unfunded liability would come down as well.
So, but Mayor, by, or Councilmember Finner, we, unfortunately, we believed it in 2011 that reforms were being made and adjusted our contributions. And by adjusting our contributions and contributing less into the system, and now having that overturned, we're paying the price for that. So I, we would all, we all agree, reforms need to be done. I think I'm going to wait until that last and final appeal of the Supreme Court, because we all know it's going to get challenged. So until that happens, I, this is hard, this is very hard on municipal budgets to have these spikes hit us because they just, they're very difficult to absorb. The rate of increase in this particular expense of public safety is significantly higher than the rate of increase in our major source of funding, which is sales tax. And that's not as sustainable. Because what it means is that it's eating more into other, you know, it's eating into our ability to do salaries, to do other benefits, and hire more police officers or firemen because it's the same, it's coming from the same pot of money. So.
Mr. Cavanaugh?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, you know, it's discouraging that the city has to pay the burden of legislation that many of us argued was unconstitutional back then. You know, they lose a lawsuit, we pay. And it, you know, if it was a fair system, legislature would be picking this up. Because that, their fault in passing legislation that, again, many people said clearly was not constitutional. And yet they're, they're home free, which is disturbing. I, I do know that, that Mr. Finner is chairman of public safety, as going to be asking our committee to look at service levels this year as one of our priority areas of of study for the public safety committee. And that in maintaining or increasing the service levels is something the city should be moving towards. And so I would, I would hope that the option that we pick would not have any adverse impact on our immediate service levels. And, and so I would hope that at a minimum, we would go with at least Option Two. Because I don't want any additional impact on service levels that are, are, I'm not saying they're stretched, but they, they're, they're under some challenge because we are back in a growth mode in the community. And they, we just, we haven't had the resources to, to meet the service levels going on that positive trajectory. So that, that would be my hope in terms of whichever option we would pick is do not adversely affect our public safety service levels.
Thank you. Mr. Loona?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the partial phase-in. You know, that's why I pay my mortgage. If I have extra money, I put it in there, and hopefully I'll pay it off sooner. So I think this is a logical approach to do. I know there's going to be additional pressures put on the city, and I think this is going to have the less impact. So I would hope that this is something that we can work through.
Thank you. Mr. Lover?
I also concur with my colleagues. I think the second option is probably the best one moving forward.
Great. Thank you. Well, Mr. Brady, is it your recommendation as well that we do the second option?
Yeah, that, and that helps Mayor and Council because obviously, we're getting ready to roll the budget out to you here pretty quickly. And that materially helps us adjust some of the recommendations we did not want to bring to you, actually, with where we were with the 8.7. So that will help us in, in that discussion. And if you don't mind, and so yes, we'll take that and we'll use that as a presumption, an assumption in the budget as we come forward. So that'll certainly help. And if you don't mind, Candace would just kind of give you a quick highlight of where we are on the budget. She's got just a few more slides, and I think we'll be done.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So just as an update of, when we last discussed in February, we had talked about the revenues that we were seeing coming into the city for the general governmental side, and that we were projecting that we would come in below our anticipated budget for those revenues. At this time, our, our year-end estimates have not changed on those. We still project that we'll be coming in around that $6 million below our budget that we had originally budgeted for. When we look at our expenses now, we've had some time to work on our, our year-to-date expenses and kind of project those to the end of the year. We've also been working with our departments on where they think they're going to be ending the year. And we think we will be ending also below budget on expenses, but not quite to the same magnitude as the revenues, which means we will still be out of balance when it comes to that at the end of the year. The fortunate part of that is that we do have savings from 1314 fiscal year that is going to help to buffer that. So while our revenues will come in lower than our expenses are coming in, we do have the savings in our reserves that will allow us to cover that for this fiscal year. We've identified some savings this year. I gave you kind of a laundry list of kind of the large items that we're seeing coming through this year through our departments. So we've had some savings in operations that were related to CIP projects this year, as well as we've had some reduced claims against our workers' compensation fund and our property and public liability fund. Our claim expense for those particular funds are not going out as, as law, as much as we expected this year for our budget. So that means we'll be able to decrease contributions going into those funds for either this year or next year. Additional costs have also come around this year. Some of those areas are personal services costs for our police officer trainees. We did a very aggressive program over this last year, trying to make sure that we are decreasing the amount of time that a sworn position is vacant, making sure that we always have someone ready and trained to go into that position as people go through the drop program or just normal turnover. So we did a very aggressive over this last kind of year and a half with our academies. What that done is put a lot of office, police officer trainees are out there right now. So we're having to cover those salaries, but they're not actually offsetting a budgeted position or are offsetting overtime at this time. But we hope that through that program, we'll start to now see our overtime come down as those offices are ready to start, become call takers and actually go into those budgeted positions. We've also had some temporary employees that, that we've had to hire over in our planning area as we've tried to balance that activity. So they actually receive revenues for those. So we have some revenue offsets for those expenses going through there. We also had an additional firefighter recruit academy this year. So they did a second academy that was not originally included in the budget. And we also had a re renegotiation of our ambulance contract, which required us to actually pay for the restocking of the ambulance supplies that we haven't done in the past. So that's just kind of a sampling of the types of things that we're working with during the year as things change as the budget progresses. The departments have been asked to identify as many savings as they can for 1415, and they've communicated that to us. And we've included that in our year-end estimates of where we think we're going to end this fiscal year. So those have all been taken into consideration. As we go into the 1516 budget process, again, as we discussed back in February, we do have to align or start to align our ongoing expenses with our ongoing resources, those things that are available to us on an ongoing basis. All the departments, with the exception of the police and fire departments, were asked to identify 5% of their operating budget for consideration for reduction. Those discussions and considerations are going on right now. They'll be part of the proposed budget that we'll bring to you on April 9. We'll have those discussions about what the staff is recommending for reductions to align our expenses to our available resources. We did talk about, this is really a two-year plan. We do have some capacity in our reserves for 1516 that we can start these discussions and start this progress with the anticipation that by 1617, we do need to be aligned with our ongoing resources. So whether that's a change in the resources or a change in the expenses, the goal is that by 1617, that we have those ongoing aligned. And just as a reminder, this is the graph that we showed back in February of where we're going. And you can see that our target is really that 1617. we're going, and you can see that our target is really that 1617, so it's our two-year target to have of all our expenses and our, and our revenues aligned. Some of the areas that you're going to hear us talk about as we go through the 1516 budget process, is you're going to hear us talk about our areas of emphasis, things that we're trying to make sure that we are including within the budget, make sure that they're, they're not being, that we're continuing to include these even though we have reduced resources. One is the financial sustainability, that's what we talked about, is making sure that we can continue to provide these resources on our services on an ongoing basis, that we have the ongoing capacity to provide these resources, or, excuse me, services. The other one is the public safety, talked a little about increasing service levels but decreasing the cost. Part of that is to make sure that we have those positions filled at all times. That helps us to, one, decrease our overtime costs, and two, make sure that our, our service levels are staying up by having all of those positions filled. That's why we're aggressive on our recruiting. Economic development, you've heard some other presentations where we talked about the next Mesa on downtown Mesa and how we're going to market those, as well as the Falcon Field Development Area. So we want to make sure that those will be included in the upcoming 1516 proposed budget. We're also going to talk about some stormwater infrastructure improvements, we'll be coming to that with you actually next week, as we do a CIP review on what's, what we're proposing in the CIP. Also transit infrastructure and operations, as we're all eagerly awaiting the Central Mesa light rail operations. That, well, those were one of our savings this year. We did have capacity this year in case they were ahead of schedule. We had put two months of operations in this year's budget. Since we know it will not be before July 1st, that's part of the savings that we've anticipated for this year's one-time savings. But we'll also be talking about the Gilbert Light Rail as well, and making sure that we have the resources and the capacity to continue doing that. And then also utilities, looking at aligning our rates with the service demand on the system. So we'll be going to audit and finance next Thursday, and we'll be discussing some recommendations to change the structure of our water rates, and that has to do with the demand on the system. So those are types of emphasis that we'll be putting in the budget system or budget process this year. So those are the types of things we'll be coming to you with some recommendations for. And I just included just an overview, April, the month of April really is our month of budget discussions, so we've kind of filtered your calendar, every possible meeting that you have in the month of April, we will be talking about something that's related, whether it's capital improvement program, or the operating budget, or an update on our transaction privilege tax, and how that affects the budget, because that does an impact to the 1516 budget as well. So we'll be coming to you with utility rates and so forth. So here's kind of just kind of a calendar of what we have currently scheduled to come to you with in April.
Thank you. Mr. Richens?
Just, I just had one question about four slides back, but you're on such a roll, I hate it. I hate to interrupt you.
Which slide?
Well, you had asked, you had had a line item in there that said each department except police and fire were asked to cut 5%. And I'm assuming that the cut was not requested out of police and fire, because they're absorbing the pension issue within their budget.
Right, that's right.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to confirm that.
So yes, yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Richens, if you look back, that's why we said, when it would come to the 8.7% or 8.7 million dollars for the public safety retirement system, that was what we asked them to identify, which was about three point, it was about 3.2%. It wasn't quite the 5%, but the rest of the departments were asked to identify 5% for consideration.
And then Mayor, I, and I failed to mention this, because I just really felt like after, there was a lot of attention in the press this week about the cost of pension to cities, and somehow Mesa ended up at the top of that list. And I think when we put numbers out there to the public on that scale, we have to be very careful and understand the DINAP pensions, present value dollars, investments are very difficult to understand, and I know it's a challenge for reporters to get, try to get that number right. Our 8.7 is compared to Phoenix's 35, 37 million dollars, not their five or six that we reported. Their $6 million number that's being reported is our 2.2 million dollar number. So that's their minimum payment. So I think there was some confusion about the difference between upfront, pay it all upfront cost, which is our 8.7, and what's, some cities are considering, instead of paying their minimum payment, which for us was 2.2, and I think for Phoenix, it was like five or six or something like that. But their, our 8.7, their number is 35, 37 million dollars. So I don't want anybody to think that somehow Mesa, we were getting some calls about why this pension is so much more expensive in Mesa. It's not, we're all in the same system. It does differ a little bit depending on kind of how long you've been in the system and kind of where your demographics of your police department are as far as number retirees and new retirees, but otherwise, we're pretty much the same as everybody else. So I thought it, just thought I needed to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, we are really looking forward to the month of April.
On April.
That's right. Christmas in April, right? So thank you very much, great, great reports, and we'll thank you for, to all the staff who are struggling with these difficult financial issues. We'll, I'm sure we'll make it all work. Next item on our agenda is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Mr. Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Last night, I attended a meeting at Crisman School. We had a very well-attended meeting of about 50 individual, 50 people from the neighborhood. We have some code compliance challenges there, some serious ones. And what I really appreciate is that city staff has taken a task force approach to dealing with the issue, and it was very wonderful, I think, for the residents to see the city prosecutor working hand-in-hand with code compliance, with neighborhood services, with the police department, and with the council staff, and helping them identify specific points of contact to minimize confusion, to get information back and forth to the neighborhood and, and to the city on moving forward with, with some difficult cases. It's, usually in our code compliance, we have reasonable responses from people to try to correct situations. In, in this particular area, we have a very big challenge with, with a home there, and the task force is looking at, again, trying to be as creative as we can and looking at ways to solve the problem and assist those homeowners in correcting it. But I think it was very, I was very pleased that, you know, the neighbors were upset and angry, but I think they understand better now that we're taking a task force approach to their problem, we're trying to make it easy for them in terms of getting information and providing information to us. And so I want to thank all the city staff who took the time to be there arm-in-arm to help work with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Richens?
Last night, one of our neighborhood, one of the big neighborhoods in my district, Mesa Grande Community Alliance, in partnership with the West Mesa CDC, had a conference on housing and neighborhood sustainability. It was very well-attended, I think the count was about 170 people that attended that meeting, and had some really good, honest dialogue about housing choice and, and what makes up the elements of a sustainable neighborhood. And so they, they had some actions going forward, so it'll be interesting to see how those work through the policies of the city and, and hand-in-hand with that neighborhood to continue to improve what's happening on the west side. So thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Yesterday, we had a groundbreaking for new developments called Verde de Mora Apartments, which is located on Power and McAlister, it's right next to Red Mountain Community College. So that's really exciting, but it offers great amenities, in fact, a swimming pool, clubhouse, and business area, but they're also going to offer an area for veterans. And you know, you had your rollout yesterday, so that's something that we may have to have dialogue on, where veterans can actually live there, and then they can easily seamlessly go to the community college, and then potential employment opportunities for them. So I was really excited about hearing about that, and it's green-friendly and sustainable, it's just a great development in my community, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning the announcement yesterday. I'll just take a moment to reiterate that we announced yesterday that we, as a community, are accepting the challenge to end veterans homelessness in our community by the end of this year, and I'm excited that Councilmember Thompson and Glover are going to co-chair that task force. There's not a lot of, there's no additional funding that comes with taking on this challenge, but there is additional passion and urgency. So I appreciate, I think we all need to include that issue in, in our conversation more often and look for opportunities to, to work on that. We do have capacity in the City of Mesa, we have vouchers for homeless veterans, and so if, as a community, if you become aware of veterans in your circle of friends and influence that are facing challenges, we have resources to address that. So please let the community know so that we can get involved and assist those who are so deserving of our support. The other event that I would just like to comment on is we, I went to lunch at Bistro 13 with several council members a couple of days ago, and it was to show our support for EBIT, and particularly in light of the shootings last week. So I would encourage the rest of the community to also go have lunch at Bistro 13 on Main Street. I'm sorry?
Breakfast.
They're about breakfast and lunch, they're closed for dinner. They look like a fast food restaurant, but they're anything but. It's the culinary department of EBIT is, are the chefs there, and so you get some really amazing dishes, and I, I will be surprised if anyone's disappointed if they go there and give it a try for lunch or breakfast. Thank you. We'll send Sally a bill for that commercial.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The next item, if there's nothing else, the next item on our agenda is to convene an executive session. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now convene an executive session.[1792.23]